Commissioner Mills.
I'm just gonna tee it up and then I'll let you.
Okay.
Well, most of the tournaments are old red. And the same path that usually starts with me. So we are.
Commissioner Starley, we're live.
That's funny, that's fair.
We lost David.
We lost Commissioner Mills. Round them up. Hurting caps.
Everything. He's not gonna show up, we'll start rumors about him.
I heard that.
Yeah, he just remembered why he came in. I know there was a reason I would dare to do it. You Brady?
It'd be more hard.
I was tardy because Brady was tardy and Brady was tardy because I was tardy, so it was trouble. April saved the day.
Both that was due, both that was due after.
So we do allow one tardy before you have detention. So, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call our committee, the whole work session to order. It's Tuesday, March 15th, and first thing we have are the minutes from our committee of the whole session back in February, seems long ago. And we have some wonderful presentations today. And the first presentation is an update on our 2021-22 winter maintenance season. So.
I haven't been to a committee of the whole since.
Yes, oh, that's the idea.
A little different.
It's a conversation.
Sure.
I mean, is there anything remarkable out this year?
Compared to last year? All right. So, I'm gonna start at the end, which is kind of unorthodox, but the reason that I'm here for the most part is because we ended up purchasing a used plow truck. And we did that in a rather atypical kind of way. And so, we found it important to come to the board and kind of bring everybody up to speed on how that happened and why. And so really, I'm just gonna kind of give you a five to 10 here on what this winter's meant for Highway Maintenance Department. That happened on February 21st, basically. Robbie and I were discussing what our options were because we had so many equipment breakdowns. And then on Tuesdays, we typically have a department leadership meeting that a lot of times James is in on and kind of brought him up to speed and things moved pretty quickly there and before you knew it, we were getting authorization from the Chair and Vice Chair to potentially buy a used truck to supplement our equipment needs. So I'm just gonna talk a little bit about like what this winter's meant for our staff, our supplies, and our equipment, and how we got to that point. Currently, we have 144 inches of snow for the year at the airport, which is about 20 inches above average for this time of year, but obviously much higher than last winter. That includes two blizzards, which brought 20 inches to some spots in each one of those, and a pretty major rainstorm in between those last fall, if you remember, or early winter. And just for fun context, the US average is 28 inches of snow, and the Twin Cities average is around 50 inches of snow. So we're already coming up on three times as much as the cities usually gets. And I think they're right around average for this year too, so it's a lot of snow. We started winter with two staff openings as well, one in Grand Marais and one in Hovland. And filling the Hovland position was really important because that's a primary, the route driver for Grand Portage area. We ended up filling that right after New Year's in January, but before that, we were using one of our mechanics to plow that route. Both of our mechanics are union and have CDLs as well, so they're kind of a backup option. And at that time, we decided to leave the Grand Marais position open because we had been considering the maintenance technician position that we just passed recently. But we knew that was gonna be, you know, a semi-time-consuming thing to go through, decide what we want, go through personnel, go through the board. And we didn't want to be adding another position to do that, so we left that one open. And what's kind of funny about that is, obviously, this is my second winter here. Last winter, when we had that position filled, knowing, you know, that it's a priority of the counties to be very prudent in our finances, I honestly wondered at that time, last winter, how necessary that position was at times. I mean, certainly they were working, but given how light last winter was, I thought, I don't know if we... I wasn't quite sure. Obviously, this winter, I am 100% sure of the value of that position. And in hindsight, maybe would've pushed a little harder to fill it right away, but at the same time, I'm glad that we're going forward with the maintenance technician position. So as I mentioned, we've been using both of our two mechanics to plow, especially in Hovland while we had that opening, or the Hovland shop, which actually plows Grand Portage. And then also, kind of the sidewalks that we do here in Grand Marais often have been done by a mechanic or me, or they've served as a backup the very few times that one of the other plow drivers wasn't available. And really, at this point in the year, it's impacted our shop's ability to keep up on repairs as well. Which, early on, it was going okay, but obviously, the number of snow events accumulated. Pardon the pun. Another interesting point is how busy we've been on weekends. I kind of went back digging through our timesheets a little bit. And, you know, winter really started getting busy towards the end of November. And since then, we've worked 11 of the last 17 weekends, which is about 2/3. But only two of our weekends off so far have been this year. So since New Year's, we've worked all weekends, at least one of the days, except two, which both came in February. And the weekends that we did manage to get off, we oftentimes put in a 12- to 14-hour day the day before to get the roads in the condition necessary to have the next day off. So for both examples of that were Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. I was pushing really hard to try and get to a place where the guys could at least have the holidays off. And we put in those kind of hours, both Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, to be able to make that happen. And even still, Christmas Day was close. It was, we had some refreeze on the roads and it seemed tolerable, but it was close to working Christmas Day too. But we did manage to get Christmas off, which was nice. And then just as some more kind of anecdotal evidence of the time we've been putting in, I especially looked at the timesheet for our plow driver that does the Gunflint Hill going out of town because basically, if anybody's here, he is. You know, between that and the ski hill are probably our two most important roads in that it's very easy for people to be sliding off them, so we really try to keep those in good shape. Let's see. So if you look at it, you know, our two-week pay periods, since Christmas, he's been averaging 103 hours per pay period. He topped out at 113 as compared to an 80-hour, obviously, normal pay period. His lowest since then has been 94. He hasn't seen an 80-hour pay period since the end of September. So that kind of shows you just how much work there's been to do.
How's he working out?
He took Sunday off and we had one of our mechanics do his route. And so I'm sure there's some others that maybe haven't worked quite that much. But for the most part, we're either all here or we're not. He gets a little bit more because he'll stay late to keep the hill in decent shape while everybody's getting out of town at the end of the workday. But I thought that was, you know, we all knew we've been working a lot, but you don't really know unless you kind of dig into the numbers and see just what it's looked like, so. It's been a lot. As far as salt and sand, it's not so much the amount of snow we get, but how often it snows, it determines how often we sand. And so we were sanding a lot. December and January are typically when we go through a lot of sand because it's dark and we never get any sun to warm up the roads. We start out with around 2,000 yards of salt sand on hand in Grand Marais. And we also had a little bit of carryover from last year, as well as our outlying shops were well-stocked coming into the year. And by the end of January, we were down to about 500 yards here in Grand Marais. And so I asked Lisa, our accountant, to give me a five-year average. What do we usually use for the remainder of the year? She said 500 yards. And that was cutting it a little closer than I'd prefer. So we did order an extra 400 from our sole vendor of salt sand in the county, Isaac Hansen, and mixed that up. We haven't dug into it quite yet, which is just fine. But honestly, two weekends ago, when we had the freezing drizzle all day, if we hadn't gotten that snow ahead of time, I'm sure we'd be there. I mean, we would've went, and winter's not over yet either. And of course, whatever, we can carry over to next year. So I don't regret making the purchase, but we haven't gotten to using it yet either, which is kind of nice. Moving on to just kind of, what does that mean for costs? Luckily, the overarching theme of our costs is that a lighter-than-average winter last year is helping us this year. So last year, we were 10% under for our maintenance staff costs, under budget. And primarily, that was due to those two openings, Lisa tells me. So there's some money there that can carry over to help with this year's maintenance staff costs. Our overtime for the plow drivers is paid out initially in comp time until they get to 200 hours banked. And so then, after that point, they get paid out in overtime cash. Because we've had so many hours outside of the norm, more employees than usual are at that 200 than is typical. So now, they're getting paid out when they work extra. Our five-year average comp payout in the first quarter is $27,000. So far this year, we are at $45,000. And it's, Lisa looked back 13 years and it was by far the highest ever in those, in the first quarter of overtime payout. We budget 50 for overtime, so we're almost at what we budget for overtime already, and it's March. But, anything could happen the rest of the year. You know, maybe we have an easy fall. Hopefully, we have an easy summer as far as storms. But we're pretty much up to what we budget for overtime at this point. Similarly, obviously, we're expecting fuel to go above budget this year. Thankfully, we were 20% under budget last year. So kind of another instance of, maybe this will work out all right. But we'll see what happens with fuel, and obviously, we expect that to continue to be an issue through this year because we burn a lot of fuel when it's snowing a lot. Sand, we were right at budget last year, so I would guess we'll probably be a little over this year when we replenish in fall, but we had quite a bit of salt carryover. We only used about half of our salt budget last year. So again, seems, it should kind of work out at the end, so. We're hopeful at this point, barring any, anything extreme, that even with our busy winter so far, it should not impact our levy request next year. It seems like we have enough carrying over from '21 to cover the busyness of '22 so far. So that's good news, I thought. Onto equipment. We have four graders and eight regular route tandem plow trucks for the county, one backup tandem, and then a smaller kind of single-axle plow truck, and a rather old one-ton plow truck, which is kind of like a big pickup truck, basically. Most of the summer, our backup tandem was in use, which kind of surprised me, being my first full summer here. That's the truck you'll recall that we ordered a replacement for in January of '21 that was due in October of '21, and maybe someday it'll come. That truck still has not been delivered. The last I heard last week was they were putting the plows on it. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, that truck will finally come. And the truck that we ordered this, just this past January, again, is due in spring of '23. So we're trying to update our fleet, but like everything right now, it's going very slow. And so even after the end of this past summer, I was leaning towards holding over our oldest truck in that we don't sell it right away and we go to maintaining two backup dump trucks, which would've really helped us this winter. In the middle of December, our TOFTI truck hit a tree that was propped up on Highway 61. In a way, it was kind of down a valley on a guardrail so that the tree actually lined right up with the windshield and the top of the cab. And because it damaged the cab, it was impossible to put a new windshield on it without replacing the metal of the cab. That truck has been in two harbors since then, waiting for parts from MAC. So our spare tandem has been in TOFTIs since then. And then, kind of the, really, the last straw was February 18th. Both of our east-side plow vehicles went down on the same day. After plowing all day, of course. The tandem dump truck blew the rear differential, which we had somewhat anticipated, but the last time we did a preventative maintenance on it, we did find metal shavings in there and we were really hoping it would survive the winter, and it did not. It took us about two weeks to get all of the parts in and be able to fix that. The grader also broke down that day and would not shift out of first gear anymore. That's still at Ziegler. At first, we tried to have a mobile mechanic come up and work on it. They were down to one person doing that job from Ziegler Cat, and we were looking at at least a week before they could even come to look at it. And so we ended up bringing it to Duluth, which took us a little while because we had to get overweight permits and get it, find a route down there to avoid the construction with, you know, a very large vehicle. So we got it down there the following week, and they just finally got it in to look at it last week. So everything is slow. We still don't even know, we have no ETA on the grader. At first, it seemed computer, now possibly transmission. Really, the only good thing about that is it's the one that we bought the extended warranty on. So that'll, it seems like the potential is growing for that to be a very expensive repair that thankfully will, should be under warranty. So at that point, that meant everything east of '14 basically had one professional-sized plow truck remaining, the one-ton, or not the one-ton, sorry, the single-axle that a lot of times is used around here as kind of a fill-in. And then a 22-year-old one-ton, which, to be honest with how much it was snowing at that point, I thought maybe would make it a week before it broke. And you might recall, we've already ordered a replacement for that and are also waiting. So really, by that Monday, I was trying to figure out our options, which really came down to, we can either rent something, we can buy something, or we could just cross our fingers and hope for the best. Thankfully, at that point, which surprisingly came out to be true, the weather forecast was looking a little more forgiving, but we've still been out enough since then. The cost to rent a grader would've been at least $4,230 per week. So that's just the base cost to rent it. We don't know, will that come with a plow? Probably not. Surcharges, fees, whatever. But that was the base price on state contract that we were looking at. And that explains, you know, obviously, buying a used truck would have more risk than renting something, but it would also be more versatile and would provide value on resale as opposed to just kind of throwing away our rental dollars. And really, one of our goals was to have that, another truck, so that we could free up our current trucks once in a while for repairs. Because they've been out so often, routine maintenance and small repairs have basically been pushed out. I mean, really, for those couple of months, it was, if it still goes, it's going back out. So we kind of, I discussed first with Robbie, you know, the options of renting, buying, waiting. And then the following day on Tuesday, James was in our afternoon meeting, explained it all to him again. And we did find really one decent used truck to look at in Superior, at Boyer Trucks, which was a 2007 Sterling plow truck that had a very similar set of tars. So a highway plow, a wing, a scraper, a sander, surprisingly similar, surprisingly little rust. Looked pretty decent for $50,000. And so then, we requested that the Chair and Vice Chair join us for a discussion that afternoon and kind of went over those options, and that is what we landed on as being the best option, was to purchase that truck. So Steve, our head mechanic, and I went and looked at it, I think, that Friday or Thursday, I forget which day exactly, and initially, found it not to be quite as turnkey as we were hoping for. And we were about to decline the purchase and kind of reassess, but Boyer offered to make all of the repairs necessary to pass a DOT at their expense. And so that was pretty appealing, minus tires, because we, you could see online, obviously, the tires were done. And so we kind of assessed, it's not gonna meet our very short-term need, but we did still see kind of a midterm need in that it would help us with another truck so that we can get to repairing our current trucks. And so once they made that offer, we did decide to move forward with the purchase of that truck. Once they got it in the shop, they found even more repairs to do, including a new turbo, which they also did at their expense. But so, that's why we're hoping either tomorrow or the next day, we'll be able to pick it up. So it, I think it's still gonna help us out, and thankfully, the weather hasn't been too bad since then.
And you're getting a much better truck for your $50,000.
And we did research, we did contact the township that used to own it, and we talked to them for quite a while to make sure they were happy with the truck. I talked to a mechanic that I know in the city to find out, because it's an engine that our mechanic wasn't as familiar with and hadn't worked on as much, and we had nothing but good feedback come back before we decided for sure to purchase the truck, so. That is on the way. It's orange instead of yellow. Some of the guys are very concerned about that. And really, our goal is to use that as our backup for two to four years and then resell it and hopefully get most, if not all, the value back from that truck. You know, our Usterlings have a lot of interest among contractors here, and I think this one will too. It appears to be in better shape than our 2003 that we would be selling soon, so there's the potential we would sell that first and keep this one a little bit longer, just as our, one of our two backups. Many of our, you know, even our newer trucks have warning lights on, they've been waiting for repairs. They have air leaks, hydraulic leaks, I mean, just, now, we're starting to get a little caught up now. But at the point when we were looking at this, there was really a lot of things mounting. One of the best examples of this is that truck that plows the Caribou Trail and part of the grade. He has a sensor on his transmission that has a tendency to go bad from corrosion that'll put you into safe mode, so you can go five miles per hour and that's it. And the best way to get out of that is to turn your truck off for five minutes and then turn it back on, and it usually clears it out. And imagine, so this was a radio conversation. Imagine sitting out on the grade somewhere between Cascade and Eagle Mountain, and the mechanic tells you, "I know it's 15 below, but just shut your truck off and start it again in 15 minutes and it'll probably be fine." And he replied, "Are you sure that's what I should do?" And it was fine, it all worked out, but just kind of another example of the point it was getting to. And thankfully, since that point, we've made some improvements and have managed to get some of our trucks in and get those smaller things fixed up. But it's kind of, again, just, if it still went, we were getting it back out there. So that's kind of the explanation of what this summer has meant for us and why we decided to kind of do a rather atypical purchase. And thankfully, the sun is out and we're hoping for improvements here in some spring weather. That's all I have. Take questions if you had any.
I just really appreciate the update, and I want to let you and the entire Highway Department know, we've gotten positive phone calls about the condition of the roads and the whole county really appreciates the quality of the work that you do.
Thank you.
Paul, and I can tell you from District 1, the folks up there, you guys do a great job. And they noticed immediately when it wasn't a great job, when it was being done with the one-ton truck and the single-axle truck. And they started, and the calls started coming in. So the fact that you gave, you know, we had that meeting, we had the conversation, I was able to let them know that the folks are doing anything and everything they can, you know, to keep things rolling for us. And quite frankly, I've been out on the roads and they're certainly passable, which is saying a lot for what you had to work with. So I think you guys did a great job.
Thanks.
And I would just like to add, I really appreciate Josh, your efforts, Robbie, your efforts as well to look for a good option that ultimately, I mean, this is like a best-case scenario, right? I mean, it would've cost us a lot of money to rent a grader. And here, we've got something that, my jaw dropped when I said it was $50,000 because I'm like, a tandem for $50,000? I mean, a new pickup truck off the lot right now is like $60,000. So I felt it was a great deal, you know, the potential to get back most, if not all, of the cost on resale is just amazing.
It's a pre-def truck, it's a big deal.
Yeah, yeah.
People want to get those trucks.
Yeah. So, great job, great work by you guys. I really appreciate it.
Really did your homework for finding that. Oh, my gosh. That's fantastic.
Not how we like to do business, but you do what you gotta do to get through the winter. And well, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, well, let's hope we don't have much more snow and that they can start to live a normal life. A lot of weekends, a lot of overtime, my gosh.
I said to them, we get a lot of weekends around the tournaments down in the cities and St. Patty's Day, and we're just about there, so keep our fingers crossed.
Absolutely. All right. Well, Elena, welcome.
Hi.
She is here today to give us the Soil and Water Conservation District annual update.
Yeah.
Delighted to have you.
Thank you for having me. So I will just go over, I sent out our annual report, and this is what we try to produce every year. It's required by the state, but it's also just nice so we can celebrate what we've done over the last year. Also ties in well with our budget. So I thought I would just go over our 2021 accomplishments, and then just, often we're always asked still about our budget, and just give an overview, very brief, of our 2022 budget so that everyone can become more familiar with it. And I'm gonna see if this works. Yay. So in 2021, we do what's called cost-share projects. So a landowner will call and say, "Hey, I have an issue." We go out and look at it, do a technical letter often, and then different projects come out. And with that funding, we get about $12,000 a year from the state. 25%, the landowner needs to cover the cost of the project, and then we cover the other cost. And we can sometimes get a couple of projects with that funding done. So this is a project we did with a landowner right on Lake Superior, just installing some native vegetation, removing some non-native vegetation, putting some shrubs, helping to increase their buffer, and helping to control some erosion. So that's just one example. And this is the other example, this is a new project that we've never done before. We haven't tried, it's with a giant coconut quero log, about like this big. It's made out of coconut fibers and then coconut juice that ties it together, so it'll hold there. It depends on where they're made, but 15, 20 years until it starts to biodegrade, and then we put in fill, and then there's a rebar holding that in. We have no idea if it's gonna hold up to Lake Superior, not a clue. But this landowner was like, yes, I will help. He did in kind, he did a lot of the work himself, and then we had a contractor come in and install the rebar and that, and then there's plants, this is right after the project's done, but there's plants underneath there. And right here is, you can see that it's undercut, so they built the shoreline out. We prefer this method instead of hard-arming because hard-arming just does a lot more damage and a lot of issues, so. Hard-arming, using racks and walls. So this is an area where there already is bedrock, but often we have people still coming in or asking for permits and help, and so we're excited to see if this will work and if it's a new method we can start to install on Lake Superior.
Elena, I imagine it would be very difficult to get the rebar into the rock.
Yeah, I have no idea how they did it. I would have loved to have seen that. Drill it? Yeah, we saw pictures of all these stakes standing up, and we're like, wait, aren't they gonna bend it? And they're like, yeah, that's like the next day, I think. It just took so long. Other work that we do, we sit on the technical, we have a staff member that sits on a technical evaluation panel. That's a committee that's with the state land services and then a surveyor. So if someone, a landowner calls and they have a wetland and like say they're gonna build and there's a lot of concern or questions, this panel goes out and discusses it with the landowner. Our office writes the wetland review then, so those two are combined. We were working on rainover headwaters, the One Water Shuen Plan, which I know I've come before you, will be starting, so that was a lot of work in 2021 to get that up and going. Lake Superior North, we've got a lot of work with that always, so a lot of administration work through that. I sit on the technical panel for a coastal erosion group that's also land services sits on, and then other entities along the shore, so we can discuss best practices, how to work with landowners, what's going on inter-agencies and government. We are finishing up still the Culver inventory, so we're working on that in 2021, wrapping that up. Eighth Avenue, I don't have pictures of that, but that pond, that's by where the old pool used to go. We worked in 2021 to get, finish up solidifying funding, and now in 2022, that will be installed so that's actually gonna get bigger and deeper, which you're probably, if you see it, it doesn't look like it ever fills up. It's because it's not functioning. Everything just flows right through, and then it causes flooding. So it'll look completely, not completely different, but it'll look different. A lot of the vegetation will be removed, native plants will be going in, and then we'll have a riser to help filter the water through to help clean it because that goes straight into Lake Superior through the channel there. So we'll be working on that, so a lot of prep work in 2021 for that. We did the 12 beaches that we monitor throughout the county, starting up in the Hovland Dock all the way down to Sugarloaf Cove for E. coli, and then we treated invasive species for 13.5 miles within the county. So some of it was up on the Caribou Trail, some was the Gunflint Trail, and then just other areas for target species. other areas for target species. We provide technical assistance, so landowners will call us and say, "Hey, I have this issue, or I have questions." And so, we did around 31 site visits last year, and we were, only had the three of us full-time, and then one AIS person, so it was a lot. Did a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails, but this is just an example of a site visit that we go to, and then we get to discuss options with the landowner, write a letter. We have 15 snow and rain monitors that we did monthly reports for, we did an Earth Day collage, we didn't do as much outreach due to COVID, but we're hoping to pick that back up. We go into the AP class and we take them out water monitoring on Lake Superior, and they love it, and then do some soils work with them. Often, we support Envirothon, this year we get to, last year we didn't get to, but Envirothon will happen. Again, board assistance and meetings, buffer law reporting, and then aquatic invasive species work, and so we're busy, that's for sure. And we also support the inland lake monitoring program, it's, we call it citizen monitoring, because we aren't allowed to say lake monitoring due to funding, but it's citizen mon, don't ask, it's citizen monitoring, citizen scientists, we call them our citizen scientists. So, we have seven lakes that we monitor with volunteers primarily, and then we have, and that's throughout the county, and then we support the lake associations that do this, and then we have actually, at the end of the trail, it's pretty exciting, we have like three or four individuals now that's doing it on their own. So, by support, we're getting equipment to them, helping them with their data, just whatever we can to support them, and then they use this information, a lot of them are developing lake management plans, or talking to their lake associations, or their neighbors, saying, "Hey, I'm monitoring, here's what I'm seeing in the water, here's what the data is." Just to help, they're just, I'm talking to some scientists, they're out there, I like to call my minions, but they're just doing amazing work out there, and advocates for, for clean water, but not in a weird aggressive way, I should say, just like, this is what we're seeing, so it's, it's pretty cool. So, that's one of our monitors, he's been with us, I don't know how many years, a long time, that's an enormous amount of cord, because I gave him the wrong second disc, it's not normally that bad. The 50-foot one, so. And then I thought I'd walk you through what a project looks like, kind of from start to finish. So, this is a project on the Flute Reed, it's a tributary. This is a bank, and I know it doesn't look big, but I'm gonna put it to scale on the next slide. It took us four years, so, to get this project done, because we have a landowner come to us and say, "I have this concern, so we have to investigate it," and then we had to find the funding, took two years to find the funding, and then COVID hit. And so, we finally were able to get this project up and started. And so, while it doesn't look like it's a big deal, and there's this tiny little crick, it, it can eventually get exasperated, because it can just continually add more and more sediment, changing the shift of this tributary, which then can change it continually downstream. So, if we can help mitigate some of these areas, we do. So, this is one where we have a grant for, within this whole watershed, the landowner put in 25%, and we put in that 75%. It was actually a really cheap project, it was only about $4,000 for us, that feels cheap, you know, we put in like $800,000 project. And so, this is what it looks like, the actual size of it. So, it didn't look very big, but what we did was we hired a conservation corps crew, and they came in and made, underneath there were that trenches that they dug, that's where we're gonna put that giant coral log, and these things were, I don't, they're huge, they're massive, and so the crew was all foot-trail, so they had to carry everything in, because the landowners didn't want any machine, they didn't want any more disturbance than what was already taking place, so we hauled everything in, so there's mats and everything, they anchored those in, we had to saw them off the chainsaw, and you have to weave the coral log into the bank, and then they tuck in that mat with stakes, and then we cut willows, well, by my property, but we cut willows, and you make six-foot bundles, and those willows are called, are live, so that over time, they'll grow new shoots and help to stabilize that bank and tuck in the mats behind it, there's seed underneath that mat, and it took about a week to do this project, we ran into issues with rain and a little bit, but just, it just got bigger than we expected, and so, that's okay. So, that's our crew, so it's actually a really large bank when you, when you put it to scale. This was an amazing group of young adults, too, if you just ever get the chance to work with them, a pretty great crew. And so, we're excited to hear that it's holding up. The picture on the left is right after it was completed, they put in, the river crick doesn't quite look right, we had to fix it, you often wanna keep it more natural, or it has a ripple or run in a pool, so they had to dig that part out, but they put in trees, there's plants there, this was late in the year, so a lot of the plants are dormant, so you can't see them very well. But it was exciting to see that on the picture on the right, which is a little skewed, but the landowner took that, and Hoobland, they had that four-inch rain event when Grandma had three, largest rain event she's ever seen in 30 years of living there, and ran out course out and took a picture for us, and we were so excited that it held up in the rain, because that's a big fear when you just install a project, that it's just gonna slump right down. So, we don't know what the snow will do this year, we have, we have funding set aside and, and stuff to go out and refix it, but this is what a project looks like from our office from start to finish.
That's really cool.
Love to get another picture next year.
Yeah, we have lots.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I can't wait to see what it's like in the spring, so. And then, we, as I mentioned, and we have a grant to do work in the Flute Reed watershed, so this is a project we're lining up for this year, this is the old road that goes, I don't know the name of the road, but it's one of the really old homesteaded roads, roads that someone's living on, wanting to get a tractor through, so we'll hard armor, but that culvert, there's a few of those very large culverts, and you can see the cement that used to be like an old bridge there, so we're gonna rip it up a little bit and restabilize everything, and then hard armor, so they can just drive right over this, because it's just a tributary, it doesn't get much flow, more flow than that, but again, if they continually drive over it, they're just gonna create more issues, and it's not that far from the Flute Reed, which is impaired for turbidity. We installed a rain garden, this is down by Best Western, we have other rain gardens going in, hopefully this year, if not next year, and this also held up for the three-year rain event, so we were really, or three-inch rain events, we were excited to see that. And the monarchs, there's milking in there, I guess the monarch caterpillars just mowed it down, and so we had to go in and like, try to find more plants, like, get in there, so that was pretty fun to see that they were in there and, and already thriving. More projects that we did in 2021, the Friedenberg culverts, which you might have heard about, Friedenberg Creek is actually one of the coldest streams in the North Shore, and it was disconnected, so there wasn't refuge for those fish to get into, and weren't able to get to where they needed to for spawning and, and just for vitality. So, we replaced, worked with cliffs, and they installed giant culverts that are like, you know, the size of this room, huge, so it was around an $800,000 project, it's been a couple of years in the making, like to say, a couple, also highway engineers later, we, it got in and filled an amazing job with managing that project with the Highway Department, and so, that was accomplished. Village Ditch Assessment, which is the nature board creek, we've done a full assessment on that, so that lines us up to do funding, apply for funding, so we can start fixing some of that sediment loading. We're working closely with folks that are in the stormwater, for stormwater up in the business park, because that impacts that whole ditch. So, again, that'll just line up more opportunities for funding, always working towards our projects for 2022, always writing grants and doing grant reporting, and at our last meeting, Commissioner Hawkins got to hear, we, we did 34, just, and that includes our reporting that we do for the county, just 34 grant reports alone, just in January, that's one of our annual reporting, so we have no lack of reporting. And then we're always trying to work with partners and build our relationships, both with county, nonprofits, and state and federal, and then, it just felt like a lot of meetings, I don't know if you all felt like that, but just a lot of meetings in 2020. So, that is just another picture. Here, we did a collaborative effort, again, that was a few years in the making, we were excited to get it off the ground, because we were awarded a grant, where we did site visits, well, we hired an engineer, and it was with a collaborative effort with Lake Soil and Water, and we wanted to have everybody on the coastal area as much as we could have the same message, like, please stop hard-arming, here's why the lake has a natural cycle of beaches, erosion, everything. So, we hired an engineer to help us with that. In Cook County, we did 13 site visits alone, we had way more people register, we just couldn't fit everybody in with engineer. We reached over 110 different people, we had 100 people alone just for our outreach event, so we were really excited about that. We developed a resource guide for folks that live on Lake Superior through this outreach effort, and people are still excited. So, we had one for the realtors, we had different workshops for the contractors, same message, but just different things to talk about. So, that's our 2021 workload at a very high level. I don't know, any questions or anything?
It's just absolutely amazing work that such a small staff completes, I mean, you're all so busy, but you work really well together, and one thing I appreciate is the communication between everyone and groups, and with the community, that's really important.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, a quick overview of our budget, Teresa and our office is our budget guru, so this is from her help, who's doing that. So, our revenue sources, just to kind of explain, as you know, we're our own little entity, and we're not really funded too much, so we're very appreciative of the, of the relationship we have with the county, being able to be in the building, what we get each year for the county really helps us being able to allocate a lot more funding. So, the blue bottom is from the county, we get around $60,000 for the county. Federal grants for 2022, we have Great Lakes Commission, Great Lakes Restoration Initiative, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and the Army Corps of Engineers, so that's the orange part. From the state, we have that very long list, I don't need to read it all. And then we get a tiny, tiny bit, which is from our tree sale, and that's about it, it's like $100, colors the top of it. It, it changes from year to year, and I'll explain based off, basically, what we can get for funding, what we have for projects going on. So, it's always a moving target from year to year. We used to joke a lot in September, "Do I have a job?" I mean, kinda joke, but not, like, "Do I have a job in January? What's it gonna look like?" So, our expenditures, our district operations are mostly personnel here, you can see, we have our other services and charges, and then a little bit for supplies. Again, it doesn't fluctuate too much from year to year, it's been kind of that stable constant. And when we write grants, for those who don't know, you can norm, often only put in 20% of the grant for personnel. So, we're constantly trying to match grants and then figure out how we're gonna pay to do it, the work. So, our expenditures, as you can see, it's a little bit of staff and mostly projects from year to year, and again, it varies. Last year was really high because of the Friedenberg project was an $800,000 project. So, we have, this year, we have project expenditures almost to $500,000, we have to finish some work down at Friedenberg, things don't always happen in one year. We've got sediment nutrient reduction projects, so we've got some storm, all those stormwater projects that we're gonna be doing, like on Eighth Avenue and some other projects with the city. We've got the Flute Reed projects, we've got two of those lined up, and then we're gonna be working towards getting more in for next year. Education and outreach, and then technical assistance, and then invasive species treatment, and hopefully, that will, some of that will move over to the Highway Department, just because it's a better fit, but we, there is funding there for project expenditures for that. Any questions on any of this?
Any, any insight into 2019?
2019, what was, that was a really long time ago.
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking, was that prep for the?
No, we never have prep years. It's probably that we just didn't have, let me think.
That's okay.
2020.
Oh, it'd be COVID, so, you know.
2019 would've been, we would've finished some of our larger projects, so that's kind of how it ebbs and flows, which is exhausting, is that, flu, it would've been Poplar River.
Or 2018.
I bet. In 2018, and so, sometimes we'll have, like, you can see it already went down, this, and so, 2018, I believe, would've been Poplar River finishing, and then we're like, "Okay, we don't need a grant, we need a break," and so, we took a break, not really, but it's just, yeah.
Smaller project.
Yeah, yeah, or cleaning up 2018, still.
Yep.
And then 2019, so like, yeah, yep. And then, just a fund balance, because you'll, you might look at our numbers and say, "Well, they have a fund balance, they're doing great." With the state, we are required to have up to six months to a year of a fund balance. If we go over a year, then they don't like to give us money, but we are required by the state. So, we are always trying to figure out how we're gonna build the fund balance off of grants and our funding, and build it. So, we feel fortunate that we've been able to be awarded so much funding and just maintain our fund balance, because people come and go, and we need to be able to, and grants come and go, so we need to be able to keep everyone paid. So, right now, we're, we're doing okay, and then that's just kind of a look at our monthly expenses, they don't change too much, but they gradually go up. 2020, we had a lot of staff onboard, so, in the summer. And then, that's just our annual budget for this year, we try to keep it at zero, or keep it balanced, so. With that, we will be, I will be coming before you to, or it'll be, you'll see it in the agenda, to hire more staff, we're hoping to get some seasonal staff on for the summer to help us, we're gonna be going through a process to assess what we need, we definitely need another full-time staff, we're all screaming for help, so we have to figure out how to afford that, with it being 300-plus thousand dollars for just the staff we have, how do we do that on grants? But we're doing great, and we're ready for the next season and moving forward. And we appreciate, again, all the support that the county provides for us. Any questions?
Just so impressive seeing all the projects.
Thanks.
We can see about the community, too, and I just feel like it's been building and growing.
Right.
As your, your community there. They're just so impressive and so important and have such a positive impact, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I thought the coastal erosion workshop was really well done, I learned a lot from that.
Thanks.
And didn't really, didn't know kind of what the dynamics are, you know, what happens when you, when you reinforce a bank, what happens to the adjoining shoreline.
Yes.
And then also, just the movement of sediment down the North Shore toward Duluth, that was really, the wave action and the way of pushing stuff down that way was really interesting, so, thank you for that.
Yes, we have those recorded, if anybody wants them, we have the resources.
Yes, please.
Yeah, just let me know when we can.
Yeah.
Other questions?
Well, thanks for your great work.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to be able to look at that beautiful picture. All right. Would anybody like to take a break in the group?
Just a minute.
Anyone else?
Well, since others are, I'm gonna step out for just a minute.
There you go, all right.
I'll be right back.
Tim Nelson must be somewhere in the vicinity.
Yeah, he just walked in.
I love those maps, I have a big map in my office of the county, and now, as things change with precincts and whatever, I think I'll have some different maps in my office. But, oh, they're beautiful.
Yeah, that one's land ownership, so the white, anything that's white is publicly or privately owned, everything else is public, state and federal.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's surprising how much is out in Hoobland. It's a lot of.
Well, it does start to answer the question, see, everybody looked, when Brady came in and started talking redistricting, and he said that, you know, the population in Hoobland went up, so it's outside the bounds, and now we gotta move folks here, and everybody in the whole group was kind of looking at me like, "That's why."
Looking at a map can explain.
We talked about it on the fire department and such, you know, just like Gunflint has, you know, several different stations as they go, we can see that as you go forward, you know, in years, when the land starts to be developed and more people move up here, we'll end up with the same type of thing going up the early, you know, for fire protection, because that's where the people are gonna be. And the people are gonna be there because, well, that's where private, you know, private land owns it.
Yeah.
Everything in white is private land.
Yeah, well, the state, the dark is defense.
Yeah.
And pink is.
Oh, but orange, gravel, section, ditch, that's the old dome, is that right?
Yeah, the orange, yep.
Yep, up by Trout Lake.
Yeah, well, blue, grass.
So, that map is actually a pretty old map, it's from when they were doing the land exchange planning.
Oh, okay.
So, those, some of those colors, like the blue and the red, the brown, those are some of the lots they were selecting for, planning for that exchange.
Okay. Yeah, that's fascinating.
What's, um, septic, oh, I see.
We are ready.
What's draining out of the, right? Just looking at, there's this green, that's, I think that green's septic only.
Well, we can get into the map in a moment.
Oh!
So, we'll go ahead and start this item. I know, maps are interesting, right?
We all love them.
Actually, when I, when I was a Peace Corps volunteer in Russia, one of the things I took along with me was a world atlas. I love looking at maps, and I spent, like, that was frequently my entertainment. So, I'm kind of a map geek, so I get it. But, anyway, wanted to just say a few introductory words about this, this item, and then, gonna turn it over to Bob. Since I have started this job, housing has been part of almost every conversation that I've had with folks in the community. And one topic that frequently comes up in regard to housing is, "Well, the county has land. Could county land be used for, for housing?" And it's a really good question, and it's something that, that we need to explore. The county, in addition to having properties that, which our buildings are cited, we also have other kind of parcels here and there, a number of which are tax forfeited. So, when somebody doesn't pay taxes on their property, in some cases, that, that reverts to, to state ownership, and the county gets control of it. And so, we do have a number of tax forfeited parcels, and a lot of folks have been asking, "Well, what are the opportunities for, for the county to, to maybe use some of those parcels for, for housing projects?" It's a really good question, and it's something that we need to be able to answer. The other thing that's been a topic of conversation recently is the, the whole issue of, you know, indigenous rights and native land, and certainly with the, with the Old Shore Road, each property, that's something that, that's been a topic of conversation. And so, there are instances where maybe if, if we have a tax forfeited parcel, it might be the best option to, to convey that back to the Grand Portage Band. So, there, there are a number of, of different opportunities with, with a, a land disposition policy, and one thing that we wanted to, to talk about today is just what, you know, what are the different scenarios in which we would take a certain course of, course of action? And Bob's gonna go through that in a minute. And so, this, this map is gonna give you an idea of where some of those parcels are, where, where it might be a, a good opportunity to, to return a parcel to conservation, for example. Might be other opportunities to return it to, to the band, and then, there might be other opportunities too for, for housing projects. So, Brady and Bob and I have had a couple of meetings over the last month or two to, to kind of start putting together ideas about this, and I just want to recognize Bob, because he has done the lion's share of the work in, in pulling this information together. So, Bob, thank you for that, and with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So, yeah, we had a couple of meetings, and really, I think we're in the initial stages right now of trying to put together a procedure to go through each one of our tax forfeit lands. We have a list, I think we have about two thousand acres here and there of, of different properties scattered all throughout the county. This map that I brought in is an older map. It's from planning for the land exchange, so, so it's, it's dated, and I'm not exactly sure if all of these parcels actually did come through as part of the land exchange, but in talking with Robbie this morning, looking at the map, there are some, some plots that were, you know, delineated as gravel sites, and Robbie was aware of that, and he said that they've actually got planning in the works for a couple of those gravel sites, the one up at the end of the Gunflint Trail, being the one that would probably be put to use sooner than later, but, you know, it just, it's kind of a, a, part of this, developing this process was looking at, you know, geographic location, some parcels may have a different priority than others. So, it's really hard to just put together one policy or procedure that's going to work and check the same boxes every time, but I think that we can, you know, lay out what our priorities might be for different areas, different situations, and, you know, I just had three attachments in the, or three pages in my attachment, but one of the things that James and I had discussed was creating a checklist for various different uses, so, you know, we could have MIS go through a checklist that's, you know, is this maybe an ideal tower site? Do we have coverage, or do we need coverage in this area, those types of things? A similar checklist for the Highway Department, you know, is this a good location for gravel site, storing equipment, whatever the needs may be, right-of-way expansions? So, if you look at the flow chart that I had basically started laying out, it looks like, you know, as we progress in the steps, these become less of, of priority focused. Step one being, you know, maybe our, our main priority, step two being a second priority, and then, kind of progressing down to, you know, the various different uses, and that's actually, you know, what I was hoping to get out of the, the meeting today is, what are some of the Commissioner's concerns, because ultimately, it's, it's up to you to determine how we dispose of or put these lands to different uses. I can go through the list of uses that I can think of, but I'm sure you guys will come up with other ideas. You know, there's conservation, recreation, emergency use, like fire halls and things like that, if, if there's ever a need down in the future in, in any particular location, we can kind of lay out what these priorities might be, and, you know, I, I don't wanna make a decision for the board of, you know, do we, are we looking at conservation, or are we looking at selling properties and putting them into the tax rolls? Obviously, the affordable housing issue is probably gonna be one of the top two, three priorities, but with that, you also have to look at location, you know, does it make sense to, to look at a housing project when you're outside of some of the townships and city? So, I do have this map here. I have requested an updated version that will delineate tax forfeit and county fee owned. We do have a lot of county fee-owned properties, which means that the state has given title to it, or we've acquired it some other way. Actually, I was pretty surprised to see that out of like four or five of the landings that we have, every one of them was actually owned in fee ownership, it wasn't tax forfeited. The Clearwater Landing was given to the county by the adjacent property owner, similar things like Leo Lake Landing, that's just a small walkway, kind of a carry-in site, but these were all owned in fee and not in, in, held in trust by the state of Minnesota as tax forfeit, but there is plenty of tax forfeit land out there. In fact, the Sawtooth Bluff, that entire planned park area is mostly tax forfeit. That's, if you look at the map there, it's, any of the lighter orange color is county property, and, and it's a mix of tax forfeit and fee owned, so, you know, they're just, they're randomly scattered all over the place. This is where Rule Eight would be, and, you know, looking at these parcels, you might come up with a completely different priority than something down, you know, if you're in a tax forfeit down in the city. So, really, I'm just kind of looking for ideas to help me better develop and, and lay out the procedure, and, you know, another thing that the board could consider is, do we, do we create a committee that helps develop this policy? Or, you know, the ultimate goal is to develop a policy and a procedure where all considerations have been, have been thought of, and ultimately, we can put the lands to a productive use, whether it be a public use or, or putting it back into the tax rolls as, as tax parcel. There, I do have a list of tax forfeit parcels where we've kind of developed these parcel reports. I know this wasn't part of the attachment, but I can email it out. I do have printed copies if you guys want. Essentially, it goes through the details of the parcel, kind of tries to show the location on the map, talks about zoning, what its taxable market value is, is the assessed value, and this one, I have an example, the last time the taxes were paid on this was 2016, so, kind of shows that, you know, for six years now, it's, it's been off of the tax rolls. This particular parcel is one that we've often talked about, James, Brady and I, just because it, it's in a, it's in a planned unit development, it's in an HOA down in Tofti, and it, it likely fits the bill, you know, I don't wanna make that decision for the board, but following a flow chart, it probably would best be suited, sold at auction, and put back into a taxable parcel where somebody could build, develop on it, a cat or a house. So, that's the ultimate goal, is to, you know, have a procedure set up that, that is taking into consideration the board's priorities and, and kind of setting up a, a path forward for all these tax forfeit parcels that we have, you know, making sure we're, we're checking all the boxes to see that it's not, no use is being overlooked.
Can you talk about the held in fee? I'm not familiar with that.
So, yeah, so the bundle of rights is what they call in real estate. When, when you have the full bundle of rights, you own it in fee simple interest. As you take rights away from it, you don't own the entire bundle, so you can have like a leasehold fee, you can have many different types of ownership as those rights are taken away.
What, what kind of rights are you talking about, for example?
Yeah, so, like, tax forfeit, essentially, when it's held in trust by the state of Minnesota, the DNR has priority over a lot of parcels. In fact, their, their procedure is, if your county has a state forest, then anything outside of an organized township or city would have to get DNR approval. Now, if you're in a county that doesn't have a state forest, Cook County does, then the DNR's procedure, there's about eight different uses that, if, if there's standing timber, if there's lake shore, all, all these different things that they see as their priorities, they get the first option to decline a sale and maybe enroll it into some type of conservation.
So, this is a tax forfeit held by the state?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct. So, essentially, you, you, you lose that right to do whatever you want. You know, when you talk about the bundle of rights, you can, you can use it, you can sell it, you can lease it, you can do everything with that property. As you take away those bundle of rights, it's, you know, you, you maybe can't use it, you can't lease it, those types of things, as, as they hold those rights out, and there's statutory requirements for tax forfeit properties held in state that, you know, we, we can't just take a lake shore property and put it on auction without approval of the DNR. There is some kind of gray areas, you know, they say anything that's in a subdivision or a platted property, you don't need their approval. Well, you also have lake shore platted property, and I think that's where it comes into, there's like a hundred and fifty-foot standard test, that if it's over a hundred and fifty-foot, no matter what it is, the DNR has to approve that sale, or whatever the use, you know, if you're asking, requesting to put it to a public use, like the landing, the DNR would also review that and give their, their letter of approval. So, you know, that's a procedure we will have to go through on, on a lot of our tax forfeit parcels that are outside of the city of Grand Marais, Luton, Tofti, and Schroeder. They will, they will, once we've decided what use the board desires for that piece of land, we will make a request to the Commissioner of Natural Resources for approval on that. I know that some of our parcels have gone through this process, like the maintenance shop over there, that is actually mostly held in fee by, owned by the county. There's one strip of land that kind of runs along that new, that newer creek that they, they routed through there that is still tax forfeit. I know in that parcel, we, we basically just have some, some equipment stored, maybe some, some materials, brick gravel and things like that, but there's a, there is a number of parcels that would have to go through this process. In fact, I think even the parking lot, the upper parking lot here is half fee-owned and half held by, in trust by the state as tax forfeited. So, just kind of going through, like, that would be a very simple one to say, you know, we're, we're requesting title to this property to use as a public park and for the courthouse, and those types of things, but.
So, held in fee is like, you own it, no strings attached, tax forfeit, there's a process oftentimes?
Correct, yep. So, anytime you, you know, sell it, lease it, anything, you, if you're gonna harvest timber or plant timber, those are the types of things that the Commissioner of Natural Resources would have to give approval prior to actually doing it.
Okay.
And currently, do you have a way to sort the parcels so that you have a list of strictly tax forfeited, and you can have a list of county fee?
Yep, we actually do have a map that's available on our Connect Explorer, which, that's not the public-facing mapping. There may be a layer in the public-facing map, I haven't looked into that, but we have a layer that shows the difference between tax forfeit and county-owned. I also have the spreadsheets with, with those labeled, and I did put in a request last week to get a, a PDF version that, you know, I could send out to the Commissioners, and then, you can kind of scroll around, see where these, these parcels lie, and that would be up to date, including the parcels that were part of the land exchange, which we only got that finished, I think, what, in 2020? Yeah, the land exchange, they had worked on that for twenty-plus years.
So, when I lived in Creechville, there was a parcel that was tax forfeit, I believe, and so, what, and, and because I was the Commissioner, I couldn't, well, I guess I moved out of Detroit, anyways, it was a long process. But, there was, because it was tax forfeit, there were permissions that were granted through the state for the county to be able to sell it? Is that, or because it was in town, or?
So, Brady would be able to answer that best, because I wasn't involved in that one. And there is typically a process where, once something goes delinquent, it's offered to the current owner, you know, if they can come current, they, they get the first chance at it, and I think they even have a payment plan for, for certain situations, but I'll, I'll have Brady explain.
Yeah, the, the person died, but it was in the city, that's.
Yeah, that's different.
That's sort of the lengthy time points, because they have, they have to consider whether they have some use to put it to.
The city does as well.
Yeah.
But then, but then the state, it also is a state process as well, right? So, there is multiple, anyways, I don't need to know, I'm just trying to understand everything, so.
Yeah, just in the state law, there, there wasn't like a DNR process with that in the state, as I recall.
So, when you do the new PDF, it would be really important to know areas that could be built into homes or little communities. Situation is, though, don't you have to have at least two acres in order to build in the outline county?
Well, so, I, I get that question quite a bit when, when people are looking at their assessed valuations, they oftentimes will call me and say, "I'm in a zone where it requires five acres to build or ten acres to build, and I'm not sure, you know, where the message is coming from." When I, the way I understand the zoning ordinances, when you, when you look at that page on, on the Land Services website, it describes the minimum area you need if you wanted to divide that land for any given zone, so the FAR one zone, it's a twenty-acre minimum, the FAR three zone, it's a five-acre minimum, but as long as you can meet setbacks and meet your requirements for a, a septic and well that are fifty feet apart or a hundred feet, I'm not sure exactly what the, the restriction is, then you can build on any size, if it's a non, what they would call a non-conforming lot. So, let's say you had a two-acre lot in the FAR three zoning, which requires five acres to split it, that lot would still be buildable if it's not wetlands and you have the, the proper site for everything for your storm-surface treatment system. So, you know, if you're just building an outhouse, that's a lot easier to do with, with less land. Oftentimes, taxpayers are finding that their property is covered in wetlands, and if, if there isn't a flat build site, it's typically gonna be a wetland and, and what's, a lot of what's left in the county that's undeveloped. So, that, that two-acre minimum is, in my opinion, a lot of times a misconception about you need two acres to build, as long as you're meeting those setbacks, but, you know, when you consider, when you consider the affordable housing, you're, you're really probably going to be looking at transportation and proximity to, to employment. You know, so, Luton, Tofti, Schroeder, you know, obviously would, would be considered good candidates for those types of uses, Grand Marais as well. There, there's not a whole lot of, you know, large chunks of land that you could do a bigger project, especially within the city of Grand Marais. The Sawtooth Bluffs is, is the largest portion of county and municipal-owned land, which, you know, there was a comprehensive plan in, in partner with the city that, you know, was developed quite some time ago, and to put that to like a regional park use. There is a couple of parcels in Luton that, you know, I, I kind of thought might be a, a candidate for a project, a bigger project, like if you look at what they did with the Four Directions down in Luton, that's just right off of Highway sixty-one. The Caribou Trail, you know, it, it's not probably the most ideal location, especially if you're considering, you know, seasonal workers at the resorts, but certainly, anybody with the transportation means, the Caribou Trail would be a good option, and there's a hundred and twenty acres there. It's actually the, there's three parcels or three forties that's right here. So, that, you know, has enough land where you could look at doing a bigger project, like what was done at Four Directions, and I think that certainly, when you, when you take that geographical location, that's where your priorities really focus on that HRA, I, I, or, or the affordable housing issue. that's where your priorities really focus on that HRA, um, I, I, or the, or the affordable housing issue. So, um, other than that, you know, I, like I said, there's, there's those, those uses and, and things we could do with these properties that I think everyone is on the same page that these would be listed as our priorities. And ultimately I'm hoping to just get a feel for, you know, what other priorities might be. You know, at the end of the day, every parcel would come before the board, you know, and, and the board would give their say on, you know, is this the request we're making to put this land to a particular use? But to be able to, to try and prioritize it in, in a way where we can come with a good solid recommendation or I can come with a good solid recommendation to the board for each given parcel. So I, you know, like I said, talking with Robbie, it sounded like there were already some proposals as part of this, um, project with the land exchange that they've, they've already got their eye on it for gravel. And something like that, you know, should flow through this chart, go through the checklist. And then ultimately we'd come to the board and say, you know, we need to ask the Commissioner of, of Revenue to put this to a gravel use. So, um, that would ultimately be done with, with every parcel and some may end up to be conservation. Uh, another option we have is to propose like a land exchange with either the state or the feds. I know the BWCA stuff took a long time. Uh, I would hope that, you know, if we decided maybe those parcels up by Bruel, um, up by Bruel Lake were either best put into a conservation easement or trying to do like a land exchange. I mean, those parcels could, could sit for, for years and it wouldn't have a big impact. I mean, they've been, I'm sure they've been sitting there for many years as tax forfeit parcels. And it just isn't ideal to try and sell it. Recreation, I'm sure the DNR probably wouldn't even give approval on that lake. I don't think there's any cabins or privately owned land on that lake. So those types of properties, you know, it's a little, little more gray. You know, is the priority of the board conservation? There are some proposals actually down in St. Paul this year that would allow counties to enroll into a carbon offsetting, um, conservation easement, which that is a, is a good opportunity for revenue. So, you know, there's, there's a lot to consider, um, with, with the county lands. But certainly putting them to some type of productive use is, is better than letting them, you know, build up and, and not putting them to a use.
It just dawned on me now that you appear as land commissioner.
Yeah, and I am really busy with the assessment stuff. We've got like three weeks to wrap that up. But, you know, I think that we can, uh, keep this rolling along through the, through the process.
I feel like this is something that a committee would be very helpful to you. And you've done a tremendous amount of work, but, um, I, I think a, a subcommittee of, of this group would be valuable to you, um, and give you some perspective. And, you know, just thinking of the conversations we've had and I took a few notes. You know, early on we were talking about fire halls. We're thinking about future growth of Cook County. What's it going to look like in 20 years? Should we be setting aside parcels to make sure that along the Arrowhead Trail, we're prepared for that potential growth? Um, you know, the gravel needs we have, certainly county priorities, you know, we're talking housing and childcare. Where are those locations? But developing the list, then prioritizing, and then identifying purposes for the parcels.
One, one idea I'd like to throw just as long as we all got it here too, because I think the committee is a good idea. But just how aggressive do we want to be with the housing? And so, you know, you mentioned like the subdivision plot. It might be best suited to, you know, sell and have someone build a home or a cabin. Well, a person could argue it might be best suited to put in the land trust and build a home or a cabin. And that way it can be a similar affordable, uh, you know, it, it captures it as more sustainable housing rather than let the market drive that because, um, I don't see the market correcting enough to make Cook County, um, affordable. Um, and so, um, and, and with, with what One Roof did, there's, we're still capturing the property tax of those projects. And so I don't see it as a, a loss in that. Um, maybe we, yeah, I was going to, yeah. And then there still is that ability to get a return if someone goes to sell. It's just that market return. So I'm a big fan of that model. So I'd like us to keep that in mind if, if we're, and I don't know, maybe sometimes it is better just to sell it on the private market. I mean, we'll probably get more money that way, straight up. But I don't know that it's as sustainable.
I also think about that, that we have it titled a land disposition procedure. Maybe it's a land disposition and conveyance because thinking of properties we might convey to Grand Portage. Um, I want to make sure that that's covered in this. I think that's really important for us to, to look at.
And to your point, Commissioner Mills, um, a lot of the land commissioners, you know, in Lake County, I think they've managed almost 300,000 acres of tax forfeit lands and mostly for forest management. They've been having discussions throughout northeastern Minnesota that with the price of surface rights right now, you, you may be able to sell a lot of these tax forfeit parcels for far more than you would ever get in a return on managing timber and selling timber. So that's a conversation that it hasn't been discussed at length, but it's definitely circled around in the, in the Association of Land Commissioners that the surface right, the value of land right now is just astronomical compared to just a few years ago.
Yeah, the whole, just the idea, and there too, the, the idea of sustainability comes to mind. Cause yeah, you can get way, way more dollars right now. But, um, just trying to be good stewards for future generations, what, how are we best managing all this? And, and yeah, we as Cook County haven't had a lot of that going on. Unlike, you know, like other towns like County here about those kinds of, uh, management and strategies. So I'm really grateful for you thinking along these lines and bringing this to our attention.
This is really timely, um, given all our needs and given the fact that we've already reached our 2040 population, um, target. And we need to be thinking about the future and planning well for that. So the timing is right.
Yeah, I think so. And, you know, like I said, whether it be affordable housing or, or any other type of use, it, it's better than sitting, you know, stagnant and, and not putting it to any type of use. So I think that, um, we'll, we'll look at, you know, putting a team, committee together. I know back when Betty, um, was here, she was the previous assessor slash land commissioner. She had, um, started to put together a committee. I don't know that it ever was, was fulfilled and put to, put to the. I did see that there was a agenda item to the board to create a committee, uh, including a couple of land committees, or a couple of the commissioners and, and, you know, Parks and Rec, Tim Nelson. But we, we may want to, uh, like you say, consider putting together a committee again that will help shape and mold this, this land procedure and maximize the potential uses, you know, given the priorities of the board today.
Well, we'll probably, I'll be jumping first.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's exciting. I mean, there is a lot of land. Uh, if you go through and look at the, the list and the parcel reports that I put together, I can send those over. I think for the most part, we, we kind of went through and, and analyzed more so the ones that, that didn't already have some type of, uh, of, um, future plan, like these gravel sites, tower sites, things like that. Uh, the ones that, you know, are, we, we have tax forfeit parcels where it's like the Maple, Maple Hill Fire Hall. And we did put together a, a parcel report for, for properties that have already been put to a use. But it might be worth our while to do that as well. For, for example, that Maple Hill Fire Hall, that's on a 40 acre parcel. And certainly you could probably split that out into some five, 10 acre parcels. And, and, you know, that might even be a, a area where you could do some affordable housing projects, like the One Roof. That's not too far from town and there's a lot of land there, 40 acres. So we'll, I'll work with James and, and, um, probably have something on one of the board agendas coming up so that the board can, can take action on it.
Fantastic. Well, thank you for all your work.
Mm-hmm. Thank you guys. If you have any questions, um, you know, shoot me an email or if you have any, you know, suggestions as part of this process. But my guess is maybe next we'll, we'll, I'll sit with James and see what, where we want to go next.
Is there an easy way to send that, the list down or?
Yeah, I can shoot you guys an email, uh, with, with the parcel reports that we have put together. Um, there, there would be, there could be some updating done to them. This one I actually updated because we, we list the most recent sales at the bottom and they hadn't been updated in a couple of years. So, um, I'll, I'll clean them up a little bit and, and shoot them over to you guys. And then I'll send you also the spreadsheet. And as soon as I get the map that's up to date with the tax forfeit versus non-tax forfeit, I'll send that over as well.
That'll keep us busy. You and I will be looking at all those maps.
Probably Hawkins has an eye for maps too.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Well, that was a great discussion. Good information and lots more work to do, that's for sure. All right. Well, we have our minutes, um, from personnel. And other than that, um, it looks like we are ready for adjournment.
Thank you.
You bet.